One station. Uh, six. And then the day after. One five thousand dollars. Now, I'll give it to you. Sure, I'll go. Um. Okay. Okay, I'll be right back. Okay, now. You got the, uh, the, uh, vacation that they've, uh, you think we can clean up? That's correct?
Yes.
Oh. Uh, pretty much the same, the same on the way down. About five hours.
Yeah, that'll be second.
Four times. And it's, uh, uh, okay.
All right.
And then have to get that, uh, from the phone, man. That's kind of, uh, if you don't, oh, yeah, I would too.
That's correct.
Uh, uh, please, uh, you might not want to know.
All right. Well, we're about ready to start the meeting, so are you good if we, uh, take this thing off and you can follow along?
Uh, sure, I'm not, I'm not doing that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
So join us by phone, this is Commissioner Snook, who's on the phone. That's two people will be hearing in the background.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to go ahead and start the, uh, meeting. This is August 5th, and this is meeting number 202425. And, uh, call it an order, we have all three commissioners in attendance. Uh, Commissioner Snook by phone. And, uh, we'll start off with a prayer, followed by a pledge of allegiance, and we have Pastor Albert Schrock, Bible Baptist Church here to lead us in prayer.
Okay, I'm good. Our heavenly Father be come this afternoon, Lord, and thank you for your goodness and grace to us, Lord, and to, uh, our county here, Ford County. I pray to be with the meeting, pray to be the commissioners here, guide and direct them, Lord, and I pray to bless our county, and watch over us forward, and I just thank you for everything we do, Lord, in Jesus.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is the consent agenda, and inside this one we have meeting minutes from 202422 and 202423, a credit card statement, and additions and abatements, where we have three abatements. Nope, two, two abatements.
I'm sure. Okay. And then motion, they, uh, they approve that, and I had, uh, uh...
All right, we have a motion on the table to approve. Do we have a second? No, second. So with motion second, um, I'll go ahead and call a vote, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next up is approval for claims for payment, this amount of eight hundred twenty-five thousand sixty-seven dollars and four cents.
Uh, I make a motion that we, we take care of the, uh, payment.
All right, that's second. So with a motion second to pay the claims, I'll go ahead and call a vote, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're out, we're at the part of the meeting where this is open public comments. Please limit it to five minutes per individual, fifteen minutes per topic. The final action may be deferred until the next county commission meeting unless an emergency situation does exist. If you want to speak to the commission, this is the time to do it. Uh, just come forward, introduce yourself on the microphone, and, uh, state who you are, where you live, and, uh, we'll be glad to hear what you've got to say. So microphone is open.
Very much. Uh, good afternoon, county commissioners, ladies. Uh, my name is Lowell A. Braking, I live at 10742, 10744, 10746 Marshall Road, uh, in Ford County, just outside the city limits of Dodge City. I'm here, uh, this afternoon to talk to you about a special event application. And just so you know, and if I can ask, there's approximately fifteen of us here to, uh, to, uh, listen in and to make known, uh, their feelings on this matter. If you'd like, I'd be glad to ask, would you show up hands, if that's all right?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
These are the same people, basically, but far less than when we were looking at this being considered by the, uh, planning commission for a conditional use permit, at which point was withdrawn when they pointed out all the conditions they would have to meet, which is only for, and is written down. I would point out, too, that our zoning regulations have been in place now for, since the last century, not this century. Everyone should be aware of what's going on, and how important it is to comply. In this instance, we had a situation come up where, basically, they started building and doing this and that, and then pled the fact that they quote-unquote didn't know what was going on. They had no idea. Well, uh, that's kind of surprising, since it's been around since the last century. But be that as it may, once the, uh, planning, uh, department found out about it, they, they did have one event, but the second one was canceled, which was good, because they're not allowed to do that. Now, I would point out to you, all of us in this room that are here today, uh, this afternoon, we're not against special events. We have no problem with a wedding party or reception that is a nonprofit for a family member on their property, and/or a ranch or farm that has employees, and when they have a barbecue to, uh, to show their appreciation for all their work and invite clients through that and everything. The difference there is, of course, they're not selling tickets. No tickets are sold, which is good, and that means it's not a, basically, a commercial event. Well, that is not what this is. This is a money-making operation, commercial, that will have hundreds of people watching steers, horses, and cowboys interacting for a ticket price. From what we can see on Facebook, it's approximately twenty dollars for adults and ten dollars for children and so forth. Uh, there'll be, uh, lots of, uh, horse trailers, there will be employee parking, plus spectators with their cars and trucks to watch the show. There are no stands yet, because they haven't got that far ahead, uh, but that's something they would like to do sometime in the future, at least they did on their conditional use. There will also be a loud, uh, loud band with speakers. They're wanting to sell food, beer, and alcohol. This site, as you know, our, our sheriff's department is already very, very busy. They, they, with the personality they have and everything, but when I can see and understand from past situations, the very earliest if someone gets hurt, or if E and S has to be there, we're looking at at least for ten minutes, if not fifteen minutes, for someone to get there. And due to the nature of what they will be doing, which is, you know, roughhousing with steers and horses, I mean, some of these things have actually been banned in California. Although I will tell you, I don't think that's very important, and that's why I don't live in California, okay? But the point I'm making is, there is going to be the chance always of injury. That's the, that's the nature of a Mexican rodeo. I've attended them when I had a business down in Mexico, and, uh, they're, they're very, very, very rough, very tough, and, uh, a lot of alcohol and beer and everything else is going on. A bad rainstorm can and will make getting in and out difficult, and could cause accidents and very short tempers. Visualize yourself, you've got two, three hundred people out there, all of a sudden it starts raining, and there's no pavement, it's just all dirt and mud. Already with all those horse trailers going in there, back and forth and everything, and then, basically, what you have is them all wanting to get out that small gate, you're going to have problems, and possibly very short tempers. And worse might even happen. We're wondering, too, if they do go ahead and do this as they leave, will they be checked to make sure that they have no open containers in their vehicles as they, uh, go back home? And that brings up another question, too. This road is, is basically a farm road, it's barely twenty feet wide. It's not even striped, and, uh, it's very hard to have traffic on there already with large trucks. Now, if you've got, everyone, of course, will be going in there gradually before the meeting of, uh, an event, but once it's over, everyone's going to be going out, and they only have two ways to go. They can go to the Howell 102 Road, which, uh, uh, and get back to Dodge City, and then go to Garden City or Ensign, or they can take Marshall Road all the way, uh, to Fourteenth Street, and then turn on there, and then get to their home in Dodge City or other parts of it. So that makes a lot of congestion on that road. And, uh, I, I frankly think we're going to see a lot of trash along there, because as they get close to the city limits, if they do have any, uh, open containers or anything like that, they will be thrown out on the road. And frankly, you should know periodically, I have to literally, in front of my three properties here, I have to go out and police the area, pardon the pun, pick up all the beer bottles and God knows what else, because I want it to look nice, and I suspect it'll get worse. And, uh, the other question I'm having is, in the, uh, like I said, we're not against a special event, we think that's wonderful, we, we just think it needs to be properly planned. The history of this facility already, they started building without even getting a, uh, get conditional use to do it, going before the planning commission. As I said, these rules and regulations have been enforced since the last century. There shouldn't have been any reason for that, and, and it's now adopted in most every county in the state of Kansas, okay? In fact, many counties have county-wide inspection and so forth, and it's working very well, as a historic county now. Uh, so what we're asking is, in the event you do go ahead and, uh, approve this special event, what we're asking, as it points out in our, on page 177, under this section for a type V, a 25105 special event, which is subject to governing body approval, we'd like to know that, one, everyone is going to be properly in business there, which means having a sales tax number. The reason we do one of these things put out is, if we're going to have it, then let's collect sales tax. Now, I'll be frank with you, as of today, I still can't find, when I go on to the Kansas Department of Revenue site, I can't find a sales tax number for this entity. Maybe they've never got one. But one thing is a fact right now, the state of Kansas, Kansas Department of Revenue, has a special procedure in place, anytime anyone has a special event, they have to make application for that special event and collect, well, all the taxes due. In this event, it would be the Kansas State tax, and then the Ford Kansas State, or at that site, it would be seven point five percent. Now, if you've got a hundred, let's say you have two hundred people there, you're looking at approximately seven hundred dollars in the sales tax for this, for the Ford County. And then they also have to make sure that everybody that's selling food there and beverages and doing anything else, they also have to have a sales tax number. Plus, the state of Kansas requires that the primary, uh, property owner or business has to have a copy of all that. You should know, as a contractor, when I get registered in, uh, Liberal, uh, Stewart County and Garden City, I always, every year, have to provide a copy of my current sales tax number. They're very happy to approve it, but they also want to make sure they get their money, and, and that I collect the sales tax on, and then this gets submitted from the state facility. So what we're asking, if you do decide to, uh, go ahead and approve this facility for a one-time event, hopefully not two, see what happens first, is, as it says on page 177, it says, "You, you're allowed to restrict the hours of operation, the duration of the event, the size of the, uh, activity, or other operational characteristics." Some counties also require the posting of a performance bond to help ensure that the operation of the event and the subsequent restoration of the site are conducted according to the governing body expectations. In other words, now, they've said they'd do this. Maybe they can't get up a performance bond, but they can put up a cash, uh, cash bond, and would then make sure it is cleaned up. And at least the county then would not be on the hook for cleaning it up if things go, uh, go wrong.
Lowell, if I could have you, we're well past the five minutes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, just in case other people want to talk about the same topic.
I appreciate it. Well, they, they asked if I could...
Sure.
And maybe there won't be as many, hopefully. And then, they've already mentioned they'll have security patrol, but they're looking into it.
Okay.
Okay? And then finally, I think, I think it's most of important, if you do issue this, you should require a certificate of insurance made up to the county. So in the event that there's any altercations, any damage, any accidents, anything whatsoever, an insurance company is on the hook for this, rather than drawing the county into it legally. Okay? That's the point. And then finally, the only thing I would point out, too, in looking at the application, every time I've looked at their applications, they misrepresent the road they're on. They always say Easton Road. Well, since the last century, that's been Marshall Road, okay? And two, the other thing we got here was, they said on the application that the nearest property that this could affect was about seventeen hundred feet away. Well, I went on the Ford County map site and, and, and did the distances myself. The distance from property to property is only nine hundred thirty feet to the next property that has a residence on it. So, and that's why, of course, they were, uh, special, uh, in the application. These are the things we're asking you to consider, okay? Uh, before I stop talking, is there any questions I can answer for you? I tried to be complete and cover everything.
It's thorough. Sorry about that. I, I don't have any.
And one thing I, I do want to mention, I have, I brought copies of everything, if you want. I can be glad to give you the copy of the Kansas sales tax regulations on this, the application they have to fill out, and then if they do have this event, without doing that, they're in violation of Kansas state law. And I'll be glad to pass that out if you want it. I brought multiple copies of it. Thank you very much for your time.
The microphone is still open, if anybody else would like to approach and discuss.
Work commissioners, welcome.
Uh, my name is Rick Knessy, I live at 10652 Marshall Road, which is Easton Road.
I'm sorry, can you tell me your name again?
Rick Knessy. And I just, I'll approach us more from a personal point of view. We have, I lived over at, by Ensign on the Blacktop Road over there, and it was, it was marked. But, um, the speed and stuff of different things and people going by there, and this is even a smaller road, it's always narrower. Uh, anybody under an influence would definitely have a hard time navigating and staying on their side, I do believe, or falling into a ditch. But, uh, we have kids running around everywhere, we have animals, uh, dogs, you know, we're gunning country, so it kind of felt like we could have a, a little bit of leeway on, on, uh, leash law and different things like that. But, uh, you know, even at that, I have, I have cattle in my yard, which, if it's a bad snowstorm or something like that, that's a normal in southwest Kansas, but, uh, we have in there, uh, ten normal days. We have public use in our half-circle driveway for a turnaround point. Uh, we, we noticed it from Dodge City days in the rodeo, that people go out that way, and we do find the, the containers and the things, as has been mentioned before, that, uh, show up quite often, and, and again, uh, they'll even pull into our place, you know, or even into our field. We have an old drive going back to a shed, and, uh, it, it gets taken on as a road, and it's hard to tell where those people end up. But, uh, these are all things that we, we, we get to navigate out there after you, and, uh, you know, I, I'll hand to the sheriff's department, they've been very good about coming out and showing up in a timely manner, and, uh, they probably have me down in several different cases, but, uh, um, you know, I don't, I don't like to be a problem, but I, I like to kind of have things in an order of, uh, of just right. And, and having kids and, and animals and stuff available is, is, uh, I've still got young ones coming, so, uh, I don't have them myself, but, but I have very kids, and, uh, that would be a thing to look at. And I think the order of, of the application, we just don't want that application turning into or being able to roll over into something else, more of a permanent setting. That would be, uh, you know, this would be an avenue to that, without it being completely, uh, new thing coming up and, and we discussed and, you know, through it. Um, I think that's about it. And, uh, that, that sounds good. I, uh, like I said, I just go more from a personal point of view and things, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Rick. All right, anyone else on the same topic?
My name's Daryl Bacon, I live on Route 16104 Road, and I'm in the nine hundred foot range of the, of the radius of this op- operation, and I'm more, uh, concerned about the noise level going on till one, two, three in the morning. The trash and number, uh, this property is surrounded on two sides by CRP grass, which joins me, and that's a definite fire hazard. I'd like to have that addressed. Like I said, I've spoke to several neighbors that aren't here today, that, uh, have health issues, and they asked me to speak on their behalf, because Steve Randall's one of them, his wife's in real bad shape health-wise, and he asked me to speak on his behalf, uh, because he said my views are his views. So he's against this, the same, for all the same reasons, and, uh, I really, really appreciate your consideration, like Lowell said. This is June Avenue for one more step, and if we don't stop it now, it's just going to be little by little by little. We don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl.
Randy Margison. Um, I live at 10305, so I think we figure we're about four thousand feet away, and, um, I have two issues, two concerns, basically. Um, Easton Road being so narrow, and the trucks and trailers on it. Safety's paramount. Um, I am concerned that the alcohol service at the venue is dangerous on that road. I have, we travel it constantly, I have teenage kids that travel it constantly. Um, during the night, my kids play sports, so I'm, I'm nervous that they'll be coming home late at night from a sporting event, and they'll meet a drunk, um, venue builder, you know? And, um, that scares me. And the other, the other issue I have is, or concern is the noise. Um, they said they're going to have live music from seven AM until one AM the following day or later. Uh, that's, I, I work, we all work, there's no, I, you've got to have some kind of peace and quiet. We live out there so that we're able to have some peace and quiet. So to think that there's going to be live music for all of it, four or five hours a night, is pretty discerning, you know? Uh, I've lived out there twenty-five years and have enjoyed peace, and now all of a sudden it just seems like it's all being taken away. I just, you know, like I said, safety for people, not just us, but everybody up and down that road. That's a narrow, dangerous road with no calm shoulders anyway, and then the drinking, that's a huge issue.
Thank you.
One more side note, please. Rick Knessy. In, in, in lieu of everything, if this proceeding on, there is going to need to be something down on the road. And I guess, who's going to pay for it, how we're going to pay for it, how wide will it be? Will there be an emergency strip on it for people that have flat tires up to their venue or to their site? Uh, will it continue on, because there'll probably be numerous from going out the Ensign way to Liberal, going back out the hallway to Garden City? Uh, so, so the width of the road and the condition of the road and all of that, with additional traffic is going to, is that going to burden all the taxpayers along that urban and the areas? Uh, if it's additional, uh, I would feel that, uh, the, the, uh, cause for the application and, and, uh, special events, and it would be, would be the prime suspect for the additional costs.
Listen.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Hi, my name's Kirk Steenwise, I'm off of 104 Road, 11330 104 Road. Um, I'm concerned about the noise, the traffic. I also, uh, therapy township clerk, so I've had numerous residents ask and be concerned about alcohol, drugs. Um, we have a couple roads dead in, 105 Road that goes south of Marshall, 106 Road that goes north of Marshall, and whether, you know, it's bad weather or just, they'll get stranded, and that's where people live. So those are some concerns that I've heard from our residents.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
I think we've been through the room. Okay. We will move on, there is no unfinished business, so we'll move right into legal counsel.
Good afternoon. I have before you, uh, this afternoon, an application by Hood Hill Solar LLC to extend the, uh, conditional use permit that was granted to them in January of this year. Uh, I believe you have a copy of the letter that, uh, the company, the, uh, request for the extension.
Yeah.
You recall that in our zoning regulations, uh, extensions are contemplated. Uh, the, uh, the, uh, conditional use permit is good for one year. Uh, instructions begin within that one year, but it also provides for two additional...
Extensions?
Two additional years by extension. Uh, there are representatives here from Hood Hill Solar LLC if they have any questions. Uh, otherwise, we're asking this afternoon to approve that extension.
And on this, Glenn, we'd be looking at a one-year extension approval. And then we would have another one year if it was needed after that?
Correct.
Okay. And that's a one-year extension from the original.
Date is approved by the Florida county commissioners.
Okay.
It was January sixteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the extension, to see if we can, where it would be filed. Okay, we have a motion to approve the one-year extension, and I will second that. With a motion second, any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll go ahead and call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. For any of you that just walked in the room in the last maybe fifteen minutes, we have Commissioner Snook on the phone, so that's who is here. You hear things come out of the speaker over here. All right, we are done with, uh, legal counsel, we will move into the county administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have is just, we just held that as a placeholder from the work session. I don't know if you guys want to just move past that to number two, or have, I don't think we need anything else on the other. I don't really know the way.
All right, we'll go ahead and, uh, pass the item number one under the county administrator's report, which is a solar energy zoning discussion. We did that in the work session, so we'll, with no action, no more discussion on that, we'll move into the second. The second item was for the Ford County engineer, John Hobbie-Walms, with Kirk in mic. Welcome, John.
Good afternoon.
So, I'm here to give an update for the last month's activities for the Ford County Engineer. As I've been doing for a while, I start off with the local highway construction projects, which are being administered by KDOT, and trying to keep the commissioners up to speed on kind of where things are headed and where they've been. On Highway 50, the Fort Wayne expansion west of Dust City to Simron. As far as the Ford County part, contractors are continuing to do dirtwork and starting paving the asphalt base at the very east end of the project and pass the barrier wall section to the east. My understanding is their goal is to try to get that area paved to where they can remove the barrier wall and the barrier in the near future. I think it'd be welcome probably by a lot of people to drive that route. Going on further to the west and into Gray County, they, different contractors on that part of the project, as far as the subs, they are also doing dirtwork, removing the old pavement, starting to prep the base for the new pavement that will go down. And they're working on either constructing new concrete boxes or some of the concrete, old concrete boxes that are staying in place are being repaired. So, they've excavated over the top of them, repairing areas of weak concrete in the slabs and walls. So, things will carry on in that project. It's approximately 12 months from the projected completion date for that project, so we've still got a year to go. A lot of work to be done. The Hemmer Cheese Plant roadway improvement is in, there are 112 Road and Outlaw Road. County Administrator and I drove those routes this, this morning, as the contractors have opened both those two miles of roads as well as the roundabout to traffic a week ago from today. And are finishing up the punch list items in order to gain completion of those projects. We didn't necessarily find anything or note anything that caught our attention from the county's perspective, so we're looking forward to getting those projects completed by the contractor, and KDOT will take care of final payments and closeout for those projects. I would guess maybe in the next 30 days they'll be totally done, something like that with those projects.
Is that, is that open to normal traffic?
It is, yes.
Okay.
Yep. All the way, all the way, all the two miles, yeah, 112 on Outlaw, that was a roundabout. I've been through roundabout flights. It seemed to be functioning pretty well so far. The next item of business for me is the Jewel Road Reclamation Project, which was completed in 2021. As you recall, I've been working with the contractor, APAC, to remediate some early cracking that showed up on the pavement surface. They chip sealed the roadway that had been reclaimed, and after the chip seal was completed, there was a five-location noted that we wanted to see some touch-up work done where the aggregate didn't stick or maybe it just didn't get applied in the first go-round. They did come back last week, I believe it was, did the touch-up work. Again, county administrator and I drove that, that section of road this morning. I'm satisfied with the touch-up work that has been done. And asking that the commissioners concur, I recommend to accept the project finally. And we have still been withholding money for retainments from APAC. Go ahead and pay that out and close the books on this project.
Action on that, Al?
I think if we could, if it'd be good, we could go ahead and move forward with that.
I would make a motion that we accept this project as completed and authorize the payment of the retained money.
So, we have a motion for the road to be completed and authorized payment of the retained money back to APAC. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes.
Okay, appreciated very much. And I do wanna put a shout-out, a combination to APAC through our discussions and working together. In case any constituents question if they did apply crack seal as well as a chip seal or no extra cost had accounted to help their product stand up for a longer period of time. And we appreciate, and the county appreciates our efforts. There's a willingness to do that. Got a couple other KDOT projects that I've been trying to keep up on. These are the passing lane projects going east of Spearville towards Edwards County. When I came through this morning, it looked like the contractor was setting up their asphalt papers, paving some base asphalt for one of the eastbound passing lanes. So, it'll be exciting. I'll verify that when I get back through there tonight, but it looked like that's what the papers were for, sort of paving some asphalt. Exciting to see those projects move forward and get completed this, this fall. We've been talking over the months about the proposed Pioneer Creek Wind Farm. Talked about trying to get some additional information from NextEra as far as the engineering fees on those. We have had some preliminary discussions with the project manager. I think right now this project's just so far down the list time-wise, they haven't really provided us much information. That's why I haven't had anything to come back from you. So, we'll keep, trying to get that dialogue started with them, and when I get some information, we'll bring that forward to the commissioners. Kirk Michael has assisted the county applying for bridge funding through the KDOT Local Bridge Improve Program. In a, in a recent KAC email, they said KDOT has made the selection of which bridges they're gonna fund. They have not quite yet made the formal announcement, so are waiting, anticipating any day that KDOT will announce which bridges get selected and keep our fingers crossed, at least one of those in Ford County. A couple of updates on some old business items. There's this railroad crossing across US 400 near the Cargill Plant east of Dust City. We had some discussions with KDOT to find out. Commissioner Boyes, you brought out that some people have noted in the past, share of card running up as well, but they had trouble seeing the actual flashing lights on that signal. The district engineer, I testified with him, and he got a response back from the KDOT coordinating, engineer coordinating the railroads. They said KDOT's data indicates they get about one train per week, and unfortunately, that's obviously very light, involving the traffic and so that this crossing has a very low priority compared to the locations. He said if they were to utilize federal funds to try to upgrade the signals at this location, that would require them to install crossing arms, which would entirely cross the roadway, which is extremely wide in that area. In order to do that, they would have to have crossing gates, basically right across each other on both sides of the road. Instead of like right now, you're normally, they're staggered, well, you just have tracks, they just have to have an end-to-end to be able to reach across that far. I think he said the maximum length that the railroad likes to install is 30, 30 feet. So, they'd have to have two end-to-end and construct a median in the center to keep traffic from going in between them. This would be quite an endeavor. Like I said, unfortunately, that, as far as the prioritization, because of a low volume of trains, it's gonna be probably a ways down the road for any significant action happens So, within, kind of in conjunction with that area, I had ran into an engineer with a consulting firm that was doing a traffic study out there in front of Cargill. This was back during the KDOT local consult meetings last fall. They have completed their traffic studies. The district engineer just shared those with me late last week, so I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. But I'm just gonna review them, and I plan to come back and give you some information at the September meeting on what they found, what the recommendations are for that traffic study. Last item I was gonna touch upon was some new business items. In light of the recent water issue at the city's treatment plant south of Dust City, Kirk Michael had been requested to have a qualified bridge inspector evaluate a culvert that's right west of 283 Highway. We did have our inspector, but didn't look at it late last week. This is a steel-beamed span that's not quite 20 feet, so I'm calling it a culvert. Doesn't classify as a bridge from a federal regulation standpoint. He did not note any structural damage to the structure itself. Just some of the material had washed off the deck, the gravel had washed off the deck, so he felt comfortable that once the gravel's put back, so back up to service. So, good news from that. And then this morning, the county administrator and I drove some of the gravel roads south and east of Dodge, or south and east part of the county, I should say. We drove 118 Road from Saddle south to Bloom, and then we came up and drove Wilbur and going east of 118 Road. And probably everyone was aware of the amount of rainfall the county's had, the roads have seen quite a bit of running and damage and take a terminal look to go back into shape. That's the conclusion of my report for today.
So, John, we had, you know, a lot of people up here for the, over the comment that kept talking about the, you know, road basically going out Marshall Road from town. Discussing, you know, shoulders and not very wide, probably tough to get multiple cars passing each other on it. What, you know, that's obviously not a striped road, but they're saying 20 feet wide. What's, what's a normal road in the county width, I mean, for paved? Like, we just, we just did the one, Gardett Road. Is that right? No, we did.
Jewel.
Jewel Road. Yeah.
So, for a new build, you generally prefer to have 24-foot.
24.
But historically, old roads, it's not uncommon to be 20-foot, sometimes even less than that. It just, it varies all over the place depending on if they've been rebuilt, not too dispass, how many times they've been overlaid. Typically, when you overlay it, they just kinda keep itching and narrowing.
Sure, yeah.
Because generally, you don't overlay a road and it gets up as a trap, it's always shady, so you tend to narrow up over the years. So, it wouldn't surprise me that it's 20-foot wide, because that's pretty simple for older paved roads. From a traffic standpoint, I don't know that I've seen really traffic numbers tied to this event specifically, so I, I can't comment as far as turning volumes and things like that, 'cause I just, I don't know if they're always giving, get estimate on how many people that people beat or trucks and trains or some thing, but I don't really have a good idea on that.
Okay. Any other questions for John? Well, John?
Should we add points there? Is it about some of the gravel roads that have been in? We've had several people up here talk to us about 118 and specifically some of those roads down in the southern, south central part of the county down there. But, you know, we've got a lot of our county dirt roads that while we had our crew working on chipping and sealing here, and then we get going on that project, and then we have rain events and things like that, well, we don't pull them off of the chipping and sealing to go work the dirt, work the dirt roads while they're doing the chipping and sealing, and we get some running going on, we get the middle of those roads pounded out, and when we are able to get back there and do it, we drag loose dirt and a little bit of gravel into the ruts. But as soon as the rains, the next time we splash it out and we tear it up even deeper. And so much of the maintenance of these kind of roads comes down to timing. We need to be having them out there. When we have a rain event, they need to be out there within the next few days so that that moisture that's in that road is there, that they can, that they can work that road, and they can, they can do what they need to maintain that road in good shape. And, you know, it's, it's a whole lot like farming. If you aren't there when you're supposed to be there, you're really not doing any good. In a lot of cases, you're, you're causing harm. So, I think, you know, we're just kinda brainstorming some different ideas about, you know, what, what can we do? And, you know, one idea is, you know, you, you expand your workforce so that you have crews that whenever they're doing the chip seal, you still have the people to go do the road maintenance on, on the dirt roads. The other thing would be, and John suggested this, is that maybe we consider contracting out our chipping and sealing and, and reserve our crews for taking care of those dirt roads and maintaining those roads.
Yep.
Which in the long run may seem more expensive, but, or in the short term, would, would seem more expensive, but if you, if you take into account long, long-term, the damage that we're seeing while we can't get to those dirt roads, the equipment costs that, you know, that we, that we purchase, that we maintain to do the chip and seal type of stuff, you know, that would be something we wouldn't have anymore. But it's just, I think that's a conversation we have, is trying to figure out how we make sure we are able to get all of our responsibilities in a timely manner, because the timing is, is important. So, and then another thing that we, that we've talked about a little bit was opportunities to get some of our grader operators to sit down where they, where we can actually teach them and help them understand about.
The crown?
The crowns and, and how to achieve those. And actually, I'd like it if there was some opportunities for, for the, for the actual equipment training where they, where they got to sit in the seat and learn how to make what they're trying to do.
Yeah.
Graders are, they're not an easy thing to, to master.
They're not self-operating yet, are they?
I've been in them, and I felt like I had six arms that didn't work hard. They, they, they're pretty amazing machines, but anyway.
Sean, I just have a comment. I wanna thank you. I called in about some broken concrete on 117 Bridge Road, 117, the bridge actually going down to three bar. And I called in, and you guys were on it within a couple of days, and I really appreciate that because I didn't want to be, you know, we're broken three bar at some point. I really appreciate how quickly you got on that.
Yeah, I think, I think when you're thinking about like the work of like maybe the road and bridge team folks under, and then we hire out the asphalt, it's, it's interesting, like even Commissioner Gilbert and I were talking the other day about Frontview, and we had just done a patch job on it, and I've either got a video and a, hey, you need to come drive my road, and this is unacceptable, and we get a lot of comments. So, anyway, it was interesting to see that, and I know that the first response was our most experienced person who normally oversees this crew was actually on vacation. So, you know, this is what we get when we still try and keep things moving, and people do need to take vacations. Family events still happen, so, and it was just said that over time, as vehicles drive over that area, it's gonna level out, but they did make it high for a reason, because the way that the trucks, it will eventually flatten it down. So, probably first day, first reaction is, oh my gosh, there's a bump where there's never been a bump, you know, or whatever that is. So, I've still yet to drive that one, but about to, do it later today. So, anyway, it's, I think that's an interesting idea of setting asphalt, maybe we'll all be hired out, planned out.
In my talk to Commissioner Tass, a lot of the surrounding counties are starting to go to that. I mean, we all know that staffing is a challenge pretty much for everybody.
Yeah.
I mean, we are able to hire and seize the people that don't have 20-year experience. It's usually at an entry level, and it takes a while, whether it's being, running a motor grader to lay a road or to learn how to run oil distributors to Roxbury or whatever. It takes some time learning how to do them and do them correctly. Or if you have a contractor that's pretty, that's all they do, you're in and you're out. You'd like to think at least that they're pretty much experts by, by the time they get to your project. And I know several of the counties here have been hiring out their chip and seal type work and a lot of their overlays have created success with it. There's a couple contractors that are fairly local that do chip sealing, that that allows the crew that the county has to keep on with either doing bottle patches. allows the crew that the county has to keep on with either doing bottle patches or laying roads and maybe can free them up to, to keep doing the other things.
That was my main concern with, with talking about bringing that over to the contractors if you have available contractors. I don't like any of those situations where like the roundabout down here, we had one bidder, you know, and we got what we got.
They weren't ready, they jumped right on their.
And just clarify, it wasn't our bidder and we didn't bid job and we've never approached this job. This is K dot job and we've already taken all the heat on that one, so.
This is me complaining and knowing about the K dot.
There we go.
And it does take some planning though, of course, and even chip sealing, you usually want to hit them in the fall or winter for next year so they can set it up in a schedule.
Right. But that, I think those kind of logistics are, are much easier to manage for our road and bridge supervisor.
Yeah.
Than planning that and then having a crew that has to do it as well. You know, they're trying, trying to, trying to plan the logistics of, of getting the same crew that does my, does my dirt roads to come over here and do a chip seal and, you know, and move them back and forth, so. I mean, I, I think it's, I think that's a viable idea that we really ought to, ought to explore a little bit to see if, to see if we can improve our services on the roads.
How can you get a submit to the county administrator and road bridge superintendent and start having those conversations in Southern County, maybe when it goes, maybe it's premature for twenty twenty-five, but you might even option then, possibly serving twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
Hardly on the August or almost summer, it's getting close to being over, doing before fall or any.
Yeah. If we are, I mean, if we pushed it and tried to do it in twenty twenty-five, we need to be doing some bid, some bid work for an extra season.
Next three or four months.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
I think that's all I have.
Same. John, I appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number three. Next item is for Assistant City Manager Melissa McCoy for an earthing expense for United Wireless Arena. Mr. General, I go before CFAB first and then come to us.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity. The purpose of being here is to address the emergency issue that we have at United Wireless Arena with some, there are hot gas bypass valves in the bowling units that, that the reheat coils and these are leaking costly for future. And so we had a maintenance agreement with Weber Heating and Dehumidification and previously we did actually take that before CFAB and for UOL as well as the city commission for Purple. And so in their routine maintenance that they were doing of all the different units, they noticed this, this issue. Basically, the purpose of these valves is to allow for a hot gas reheat for dehumidification. But because our climate for the most part is really dry, we don't generally need the dehumidification. And if we were to need it at some point, we have the option with the natural gas reheat that would be an easy option that they could program for us. And so this option of, you know, with these ten hot bypass valves that are in each of the bowl unit, there are, there's a, seems to be a common weakness where nine of these are actually leaking, really costly for future. And so we had our Director of Facilities, Kevin Israel, who works on also construction side, also evaluate this proposal and assured us as well from a staff perspective that it was the best option and the least costly for us to go with just to solve this problem for the long term. And it takes out some extra complexity that maybe we, we did not need and will also lower our future maintenance cost on these units. So the total cost for this proposal is forty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. And, and so it is a sole bid in part because of the maintenance agreement that we have. We're trying not to have a lot of different vendors working on equipment, so we end up with some confusion there, but also because of the emergency nature of getting this fixed and getting the problem stopped. And so we would pay for this out of sales tax depreciation replacement fund. And as County Administrator mentioned, we did not, because we already take this to CFAB, but we did notify them and I did not receive any concerns, only acknowledgement from the board chair.
Okay, so option one is, is to remove and bypass all forty of the valves in four bowling units and option two is to replace just the nine we know that are leaking, but potentially the others could be leaking as well?
Yes, there could be more that are leaking, particularly in the area near the locker room, the kitchen area, sorry. And so just to avoid any long-term problems, that's why they are recommending that we go spend a couple thousand extra dollars, it's not even quite two thousand, to give all of them and avoid any future problems with this since we already noticed that we have so many that are leaking.
We're there.
Sorry, I'm proud of you there.
That's all right. So the recommendation is option one?
Yes.
Got you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve option one, amount of forty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty.
All right, so we have, there we go. So we have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next items for planning ability, Melissa Drake for the special event application.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Hi, Susan.
I would like to address a few things before we talk about the special event that was brought up. First, the distance of the seventeen hundred, they got that from me. The reasoning is when we get the conditional use, it was nine hundred, nine hundred feet from the distance of the property. Conditional use was for full time, all the time. So what I did was I just measured to the house because it's just for a specific amount of time. I thought, well, the most of them would be at the home, that's where the, the irritation, the noise and everything would be, so that's where I measured from. So where he got the distance was from me. I would like to, on him not knowing the regulations, Heidi did know the regulations. He actually approached me about applying for the conditional use six months before he applied. What he did not know was that he would have to get the public well and that along was fifty thousand dollars. It was the cost of the development, he was not prepared for. It wasn't that he didn't know the regulation, he, he didn't know the regulations, he checked that out. So I, I wanted to clear that up. As built before, I was called and told that he had, he was starting to build before. So I actually had a drone fly over it. All he did was set up his corral. That's it. And he actually called me and said, is there a problem with this? And I said, here, well, can you set up your cattle bins how you want to set your cattle bins up? I did not think I had a right to tell anybody how they can set up their cattle bins.
Okay.
There's no structure, it's just his cattle bins. He did set it up in the corral in the form of what he would use for the arena, but that's it.
Is it not a skinned unit like?
No, it's just the, it's just the cattle bins. I would like to bring up something that hasn't been brought up. Well, one time again, he had a concern about the fire. Rob Boyd did bring that up and I was going to, if it's approved, I was going to suggest that they cut the grass or whatever to make sure fire, that there's no fire hazard. But Rob did bring that up to me on the, Rob Boyd did. But those were conditions that I knew, I knew about and I thought I should address those too. So you should have before you resolution number twenty-two-four dash three. This resolution is for a special event application for, actually for two events for Mexican rodeos at one zero four four three Marshall Road. It's approximately four miles west of Dodge City on Marshall Road. The resolution mentions that the first event would be held August thirty-first, starting at twelve P M. and ending at one. The second event would be held October sixth, same hour, starting at twelve, ending at one. And the applicant mentions some conditions, that tents would be provided for shade, they would sell concessions for water and food, they promised porta potties at the recommended number from the vendor, they wouldn't just put a few out there, they would ask the vendor, how many did they recommend between two, for two to three hundred, and that's what they promised to provide. They're going to hire security staff from Southwest Kansas Security Team. The seedings, they do not have stands, they're going to use the vehicles that's going to surround the corrals, they're going to supply multiple trash cans, and then they promised that the next day they're going to come out and pick up trash. There was two items on the application that were left with uncertainty that I'd like to point out, and that was live music, if it could be afforded. And they did mention that it could start at eight. And of course, as it was brought up, that the commissioner, you guys can put anything that you want, any restrictions that you feel is necessary. But that is what you have before you for these special events. And that's ended my, my discussions.
Melissa, have you had anybody besides the people putting this on, have you had anybody tell you that they're favorable to this?
No, sir. It's very similar to what, no, it.
Yeah.
Very similar. As a matter of fact, it's almost hand in hand.
And I think what's interesting about that one is we only had one neighbor make a comment about this. Like, like in disagreement?
I had petitions on those.
I, I just remember the, I don't want to out the family, the one family that, I mean, I know that there's multiple of them living out there, but it seemed like the one family that maybe had multiple houses, adult children that were out there. That was the one that was, it didn't seem like it was everybody that was after it.
I have a petition that's signed by everybody pretty much.
On the ways.
I know these.
Okay. And his, so twelve P M. to one A M. I mean, we're talking about doing conditional uses, I mean, what, one, one A M. seems pretty late for a county road.
I think, and of course, that's totally up to you. I'm, I'm an old woman, I'm in, I'm in bed at eight now.
Okay.
Would, question, there was a picture of this, an overhead picture of this property, was there?
No, there, there wasn't. This is a special event, so it. It would take me about one minute to give one for you.
I have one.
Oh, I did tell you, but the applicants are here.
Yeah, I, I saw him come in.
They do, they said, did you have one?
One of the concerns I'm going to have is adequate parking.
Oh, they have more than that?
People parking out on their shoulders.
Absolutely not, there will be no need for that.
Yeah, and then of course, emergency response time and, and that was the deal about the parking is, is that we make sure that we keep a roadway clear enough that we have emergency response, not just to this place, but to whoever else is out there that may need it in the area.
Definitely.
So, so that's good. You know, several, several of the folks brought up the noise and I, and I understand he's got a picture of it right back there. Will you bring it up?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
But there is plenty of parking in front of where they, where they have their pro position. There's a lot of parking to the east and, and up front.
Okay. I would make the suggestion that they keep it through a path to their arena for emergency response if that's needed, so they don't have to fight through that. So, so this is on the south side of Marshall?
Yes, sir, it is.
Noise levels brought up and I know we, we've dealt with noise levels before. Southwest part of Dodge out here is actually in the county.
Yeah.
We don't have noise ordinances per se for the county and I, I've resisted that. I, and I, I see that going in bad directions for farmers with tractors in the middle of the night or anything like that going on out there where people want to start complaining about noise. We, I just, I'm very cautious about talking about noise ordinances in the county.
It can be a double act, sir.
Yes. John, I think one o'clock is probably like myself, I, I would be more inclined to, to be favorable with this if we were working in eleven or eleven thirty or twelve o'clock at the time rather than spilling over till one o'clock in the morning. I don't, you know, Lowell brought up injuries and the violent nature of, of the rodeo and things like that. I appreciate that, but anything animal, whether, whether it be a rodeo, it can, it applies right down here to Roundup Rodeo too. Rodeo is a violent sport.
Absolutely.
It can be. I got a son-in-law that was injured pretty badly here in November in Fort Worth, was like Saddle, so it's, it can happen. And I get what you're saying about it, but it can happen anywhere. And it can happen, it can happen with me on the farm sorting cattle as far as that goes. We just, that is the nature of some of the work we do and some of the play we do, so.
We take that risk though.
We, we do, yeah.
They'll have visitors there that aren't there to take that risk.
Well, but Roundup Rodeo has visitors and they have, they have folks that come down there, you know, as well.
So if we change the resolution to say midnight instead of one? People have to work in the mornings.
It shouldn't go past ten.
What is the racetrack due? What is their deadline?
I don't know what the racetrack is.
Isn't it like eleven o'clock or something?
They, they run until they're done, unless there's a reason to shorten.
I don't think that's true.
No, it's, it's true.
Oh, my, yeah, my husband's gotten home at one on the racetrack.
When the racetrack was in town, it was completely different than what it is now.
What about the sale of alcohol?
Does this address, is this alcohol symbols on here?
No, it, it just, actually, it says, applicable with all details set forth in the special event application.
The, the alcohol deal would be a separate application that they have to go through, but.
So these are both Saturday events?
They are both Saturday events.
Would that be an alcohol-free period then? Or would they be allowed to drink alcohol?
If they get a license, they're not going to be able to bring alcohol. I think if you get a license, you'll sell it on purposes.
Yeah, I don't think we can, we can't regulate somebody from.
Right.
Bringing alcohol onto their, onto their premises.
What's, what's to the west of this property?
Mr. Bacon's property, C R P and Mr. Bacon's property.
C R P.
There's a lot of grass from Highway fifty-six from one oh four to one oh six road that would stretch clear to the river if something was ever happened.
No grandstand, so there's going to be vehicles parked around the circle.
Yes.
Which are expected two to 300 people. So that's going to be what's 150 cars around the circle.
That's I don't know how that works. That's.
Well, it would only be the cars that play around the circle and then people with chairs looking from fans, stuff like that.
Okay.
Majority of the people would probably come if we if uh we could afford live music. That's what they would come to for that actual party.
Like a party?
They'll be dancing.
Yes. Then we'll be dancing. Because that's not that that's not what we agreed to because I said.
With the live with the live music, people naturally dance.
So where would where would that go on?
That's that's two events and and they can only have, I mean, just one thing. That's not that's not what we agreed to. I I said one thing. You can't have multiple things going on.
Okay, yeah.
So is this supposed to be like Palomino where you go like an event where people are inside under a shell dancing and that's where the partying is and there's a rodeo that goes on before it and the rodeo ends and the partying goes somewhere else?
I I'm just getting hit out of the blue.
Wait, did this dial down a little bit? Favor of this.
So let's can we table this until the next meeting?
I make a motion that would deny the.
I would second the motion to deny. So Commissioner Schnuck, we have a motion and a second to deny the special event application as presented. The motion second. Any further discussion on it?
I think we need more details, guys.
All right. So I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
The next item is for the sheriff's office to discuss the purchase of potential vans.
It's my house. No, I've got I got this. Okay, thank you for your welcome.
I'm here.
One second.
Everybody make their way out.
All right.
We're here today to ask for, uh, we're wanting to go out for our RFP on purchase of uh transport vans. And the last vans that we purchased with all 2021, we purchased eight vans that were programmed vehicles. They weren't maybe they were 2020s. One of them had 12,000 miles on it and we received it and the other had 15,000 miles on it. Uh, right now, one of them has 153,000 and the other one has 141,000.
I make a motion to approve the request to go out for bids on two vehicles used as detention vans. All right, with motion second, any further discussion on it? Hearing none, I call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are requesting you more programmed vans.
That's fine. You're going out for bid? Yep. You're good.
I had wanted to speak on a bigger van like the last.
Nope. Nope. You're good. That doesn't change anything, so we're good there. They passed.
Gentlemen, the first meeting in September is scheduled for labor meeting on the September 2nd. Generally, the precedent has been just to move that meeting to the next day, which would be Tuesday, Thursday. Is that what you want to do, same the same time? Regular meeting time, just move it to the second or the third?
I would make a motion that we move the first meeting in September to September 3rd or regular time.
I'll second that. And we'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Gentlemen, the upcoming meetings are both for County Clerk Eddie Cox. I'll give you all the details for that.
Tomorrow, go out and vote. Polls are open seven to seven. Go to your polling location. Canvas will be August the 12th at 8:30.
And how's voting going so far?
Very slow. Get out there. Vote.
All right. We have nothing further. I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.